And welcome to tonight's city council meeting. Today is April the 6th, 2021. The time is now 6:00 PM. The regular meeting of the city council of the city of Trinidad will now come to order through a Zoom meeting. Would you please rise from the pledge of allegiance and Mr. DeBono, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag. United States of America. And to the republic.
Which it stands.
One nation, under God. Indivisible.
And just for all.
Thank you, Mr. DeBono. Yes, sir. Let's call roll call and just let everyone know that Mr. Goodall will not be with us tonight.
Here.
DeBono? Riego?
Here.
Here.
Shu? Shu?
He says here, I hear him say here.
Williamson?
Here.
Riego?
Here. Tonight, we have a proclamation. It is the week of the young child, 50th anniversary, and I'd like to read this. Office of the Mayor Trinidad, Colorado proclamation, week of the young child, 50th anniversary, April the 10th through the 16th of 2021. Whereas the Werf No, Los Angeles County's early childhood advisory council, South Central Council of Governments, Early Learning, Head Start, Peas in a Pod, Trinidad School District, Aguilar School, Pony School, Primero School, Branson School, and Kim School, in conjunction with National Association for the Education, of young children are celebrating the 50th week of the young child, April the 10th through April the 16th, 2021. And whereas by calling attention to the need for high quality early childhood services for all children and families within the city of Trinidad, these organizations work to improve the quality and availability of such services. And whereas, early childhood professionals who work with or on behalf of young children make a difference throughout our communities, and their efforts warrant thanks and recognition. And whereas, public policies that support early learning for all young children are crucial to young children's futures and to the prosperity of our society. And whereas, the future of our great city of Trinidad depends on the quality of life we provide to Colorado's young children today. Now therefore, I Philip T. Rico, Mayor of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, on behalf of the Trinidad City Council, hereby proclaim April the 10th through the 16th, 2021, as week of the young child in the city of Trinidad, Colorado, and encourage all citizens to support and invest in early childhood in Colorado. And witness here, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of this city to be affixed. Mayor Philip T. Rico, April the 6th, 2021. And I'd like to bring one other item in this particular. It's also autism month, I believe. And Mary Jo Baudino contacted me yesterday and wanted me to express our thanks, or her thanks, for what the city of Trinidad has done in recognition of autism. As we know, that that is a huge issue throughout the country. I just read yesterday that one in 54 children are currently being diagnosed with autism. So I think that they need, you know, that's becoming a very, very big issue. So with that, going to item two, approval of the agenda, council have any changes? Hello? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call a vote?
DeBono?
Yes.
Riego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item three, policy items and staff reports. Mr. Valentine, do you have anything to report from staff?
Nothing to report from staff, Mayor, but I'd like to acknowledge Jennifer Yates. She just chatted in and thanked Mayor and council for that proclamation. She's from the Hula Early Learning Childhood Center, if I got that right. But no reports for staff, but I just wanted to let you know that she was on the call.
And like I said, on that autism thing, like I said, they wanted to thank everybody that participated in helping. I guess there were some blue lights or something that were put up and wanted to thank the city for doing that for the autism group. On to item four, petition for communications, oral or written. Anyone online that would like to speak? Okay. I do have a couple of things, just to remind everybody that April is the National Dig Safety Month, which is an 811 service. That is, it's a free service. And it's for anybody who is going to do any digging, that includes all of the utilities that are out there for your own protection, anytime you're going to dig, please call 811 and they will set up an appointment for you to, for them to come out and they will mark all of your utilities before you dig for your own protection. Have a couple of other things here besides that. I have an Advocates Against Domestic Assault, a letter. It says, this is David, March the 12th, 2021, Honorable Mayor Rico, members of the city council. Advocates Against Domestic Assault would like to express our gratitude for the $1,500 monetary grant in utility credit. Not only will it assist in providing critical services to victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, and their children, but strengthens our purpose to continue our valuable work. Thank you for your continued support and awareness of AADA services to the community. Sincerely, Charlene Tortorelli. He's the executive director of Advocates Against Domestic Assault. And I also have a letter here that we received from the Arbor Day Foundation. And it's quite lengthy, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but it's just saying that February the 27th, Trinidad, Colorado was named a 2020 Tree City USA by the Arbor Day Foundation in honor of its commitment to effective urban forest management. Trinidad achieved Tree City recognition by meeting the program's four requirements, a tree board or department, a tree care ordinance, an annual community forestry budget, or at least, of at least $2 per capita, and an Arbor Day Observance Proclamation. So like I said, there's some other language in here, but I'm not going to read it, but just wanted to mention that we did receive this letter from the Arbor Day Foundation. Let's go on to item five, the consent agenda. Approval of the regular meeting minutes of March 16th, 2021, and special meeting minutes of March the 22nd, 2021. Item B.
Deems to be a danger to themselves or others.
A new retail marijuana cultivation facility application filed by Freedom Growers Incorporated at 3613 A Freedom Road, set for a public hearing at 6:00 PM on May the 18th, 2021. Jason Scherling, are you on tonight with us? He may not be. Item C, new retail marijuana cultivation application filed by Freedom Growers Incorporated at 3613 B Freedom Road, and set for a public hearing at 6:00 PM on May the 18th, 2021. Item D, approval of modification to entertainment district reporting to allow Flojo's Tavern Hall LLC at 125 North Chestnut Street to attach to the district. Ms. Behaven, are you with us tonight? Okay, she is not. Item E, approval of the bills for $2,131,468 and 5 cents. Item F, approval of the payroll, April the 3rd, 2021, through April the 16th, 2021, in the amount of $384,128 and 2 cents. Do I have a motion, please?
To approve the consent agenda.
Yes. I have a second.
Second.
Call a vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Riego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Right, can you unmute yourself?
I, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I'll vote, yep.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Item six, public hearings, we have none tonight. Item seven, unfinished business, we have none. Item eight, miscellaneous business. Resolution, 8A, that's 8A, resolution certified in the Trinidad PD FOP Lodge Number 70, as the exclusive bargaining agent for the Trinidad Police Department Bargaining Unit, and extending the rights under the current AFSC ME agreement to those members until December the 21st, 2023, when a new agreement shall be established. Do I have a motion, please? Second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Discussion, Mr. Valentine, you want to give us any information on that, or is Chief on with us, Chief Torioso?
Actually, no, Mayor. Basically, through the past couple of meetings, we have had the decertification of the police department with the ASME local, and then them voting to join the FOP, Fraternal Order of Police. Lodge, and this just documents that and recognizes that as their bargaining unit. And I don't have anything to add, and I've worked exclusively with them on this, and I believe Detective Jennifer Lay is online, if you have questions.
Detective Lay, do you have anything to add?
I do not have anything to add. Our police department voted, and it was unanimous that we wanted to go with a different department agency or person.
Garrett, do you have anything that you need to add?
I do not, Mayor.
Okay. Turn it over to council, Ms. Riego.
I have no questions.
Ms. Ogletree?
I have no questions, Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Shu?
No questions.
Mr. Williamson?
No questions, Mayor.
Mr. DeBono?
No questions, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Call a vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Riego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item 8B, extraterritorial three-quarter inch water tap, request by Manuel and Maria Batichia at 13200 Corundum Road. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Veale, are you on tonight?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes. Could you please give us some background information, please?
Yes, I have, for request, our first request for an extraterritorial water tap, since we amended the water restrictions August 18th of last year, for Manuel and Maria Batichia. They plan to serve a residence to be located at 13200 Corundum Road. Upon approval by city council, Manuel and Maria Batichia will be required to pay $3,977 to include a planned investment fee, a tap fee, plus all the necessary meter components. The water rights acquisition fee will be, not be applicable, since their address is within a one-mile radius of the city limits in accordance with resolution number 1327.
Go ahead and get councils, any information, if they have any questions. Ms. Riego?
No, I have no questions. I, I'm familiar where the properties.
I have no questions. I have no questions, thank you.
Mr. Shu?
No, no questions.
Mr. Williamson?
Straightforward, I have no questions.
Mr. DeBono?
No questions, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I have none. Let's go ahead and call a vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Riego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item 8C, first reading of an ordinance amending Article 7, signs of Chapter 14, Trinidad Land Use Code, by adding section 14-97 to the Trinidad Sign Code, the code of ordinance of the city of Trinidad to whip murals, and setting the hearing date, consideration set ordinance, to 6:00 PM on April the 20th, 2021. Do I have someone to introduce, please?
Introduce it.
Okay. Need a motion? So moved. Need a second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Downs, do you have anything? I know we've discussed this through some of our work sessions, do you have anything to add?
Mayor, any council members, I really don't, but I will tell you, I have a couple of corrections, if I could, please, just changes and corrections that were submitted to me by Councilwoman Ogletree, and I think they're all, they're all appropriate, and I'm sorry for doing this now at first reading, but if I could please just suggest these to you, and you could look them over, and I would move to amend by interlineation, and then prior to second reading, we of course will have all the corrections made, if these corrections are in fact agreeable with all of you. May I go ahead with the proposed corrections, please? Okay, thank you. So in paragraph, letter A, and then paragraph 1H, on the first line, mural shall not discriminate or appeal in any way to a group. So we would be adding the words to A before group there. Then in paragraph 2, so it would be A2, then subparagraph D is in dog, where it says the contact information for the muralist, and instead of the word if, have the word whether. So information for the muralist, comma, and whether the muralist is reserving any rights. I hope I'm not speaking too quickly. And then, okay, and then in paragraph 3, subparagraph C is in Charlie, there were several proposed changes in there. So let me begin with that. And on the second line, that begins with application to the Trinidad Arts and Culture Advisory, where it says board, that should read commission. Trinidad Arts and Culture Advisory Commission. And to the Historic Preservation Commission for suggestions or recommendations from those And then, the involvement of those two municipal commissions shall be for the purpose, purposes of making non-binding recommendations, there should be an S on recommendation, with respect to the overall aesthetic of the proposed mural for the Arts and Culture Advisory Commission. And then, down below, the last sentence in that paragraph, city council is the final authority and decision maker for a mural application, may consider the recommendations, again plural, of these subordinate commissions, and remove boards or. And then, that, no, that's all. Did I, was that everything, Councilwoman Ogletree?
Yes, that's all.
Okay. So I think those sentences are all appropriate, but go ahead, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Before we move forward, there's one suggestion, I don't know if we had to add that or not. When we had this discussion on our work session, I mentioned about who owns the actual mural, is it going to be the artist or the building owner? Is that something that should be put in there, or how are we going to handle that?
Well, Mayor, I don't believe that, that, I think that we have, well, we have in there that we want to know who the responsible party is going to be for the mural. And so I think that will give us enough information and enough specificity about literally that, who is going to be responsible for the mural. So if it's going to be the building owner, the business owner, or the muralist, who is going to be responsible for the mural, and is going to insist on reserving all rights, I mean, that's an important consideration for a number of reasons, including who is going to be allowed to make any changes to the mural if they were to, whether or not the mural is taken down. So I think ownership is not as important as the responsible party, if that makes sense. I think they kind of suggest one another, that is usually, the owner is going to be the responsible party, but I think most fundamentally, we want to know who the responsible party is, if that makes sense.
Okay. Okay, before we move forward, I think it's my best to go ahead and take a motion for the amendments.
I move that, I move that we approve the amendments, the suggestions.
Second?
Second. Second.
Okay. Let's go ahead and, any discussion from council?
Just, just a question, Les.
Yes, sir.
Uh, same subject, what happens if the building is sold, and they want to take the mural off there, and the painter doesn't want it? I mean, that, I think that's what kind of what Phil's asking, is who's going to be responsible for that?
Well, I, I would say that whoever is going to be taking the building over, like if it's a sale of the building, the new owner is going to be responsible for it. So I understand the reason for the question, but it's hard to anticipate what is going to happen with the building, if you know what I mean. Like, we can get all the players lined up, again, who the, you know, who the business owner is, who the building owner is, you know, landlord, things like that. But in the event the building is sold, all the appurtenances, as we say in the law, generally go with the building. So a new building, I hope I'm answering your question, it's just we will have a responsible party for the players at the time the mural application comes in. That is, the business, you know, and who owns the building, and the muralist. Does that help?
Yeah, I, if you're kind of comfortable with that, I just kind of think that if somebody come in there, you know, someone did a job and painted it, and they, they wanted to change it, and the artist didn't want to change it, would he have any right whatsoever?
It's a, it's a good question. I mean, I don't know that a muralist could have a reservation of rights that would survive a transfer, that would survive a sale. It's an interesting legal question. I suppose it could be done, that one would create, I mean, I don't know what its equivalent would be in property law, it's like, you know, an easement or something, but to say that you cannot change or alter a mural on a building, that would be, you know, property lawyers may be able to do that, I don't know how you would do it, but it would be hard to do unless it was of a historical nature, and it was, you know, impossible to make changes to a historical building. But I mean, that's the best answer I can give. I, I just think it would be hard to have language in there that would require any future owners of a building to never be able to take down a mural. I think that would be hard to do. I'm not saying it can't be done, but it would be hard.
No, I understand, it's just more for the artist than the owner.
Right.
No, that's fine, that's good. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions concerning amendments?
I do. I have one. So on paragraph 2, applications.
Yes.
Paragraph, subparagraph C?
Yes.
Or D, I'm sorry.
Yes.
So can we, is it, would it be proper to add to that, that sentence, that the muralist either reserves the artistic rights? Is that going to be included in there, or that if, if he's relinquishing his artistic rights to the art?
Well, that is what that is getting at, and that is, let's say a building owner has a muralist of some renown. They may say that I don't want the building owner or the business operator altering my mural unless they have my permission, or unless it's taken down completely. Right, like if it's a real work of art, they may say, but as part of this agreement, I only agree to apply the mural if they agree that they will not alter my mural in any way, and if they do, then it's to be taken down entirely. So that is, that kind of reservation of rights. Like if you're just hiring a person who's not a real artist to apply a mural, and if it passes the, you know, the gauntlet of this application process, and it's okayed, then the person who's not really an artist may say, they can do whatever they want to. I've applied the mural, it's not a great work of art, it's their property, so in that case, it would not have to let us know that the muralist is reserving rights. But otherwise, we may, we do want to know if the muralist is in fact maintaining some kind of control or ownership over the mural. It's primarily between those parties. But again, we do want to know in case there is a reservation of rights.
Okay, so that will be documented in the file?
It will.
File with the city. I have one more question. Has anybody on staff gotten any feedback as far as how the public sees this ordinance?
Question concerning the amendments, Ms. Riego?
What, I'm sorry.
Would that be to the general motion? Bring that question up in the general motion?
Okay. I'll wait.
Sorry, Mayor.
It's okay. Ms. Ogletree, any questions, more of the questions?
Not with regard to the changes, no.
Okay. Mr. Shu, you've mentioned anything, anything else that you have?
No, no, that's fine.
Mr. DeBono?
No questions, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Williamson?
No questions, Mayor.
Okay, I have no questions. Let's go ahead and take a vote on the amendments.
Yes.
Riego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Going back to the original motion, we had a first on that, could whoever gave the motion, change their motion to include the amendments? Ms. Garrett, who, who gave the first motion?
Officer Member Shu.
Mr. Shu, could you?
Oh, sure. I thought Karen did it, but that's fine. Yeah, I, I'll make a motion to do with the amendment.
Okay. Second on that?
Second.
Okay. Discussion, Ms. Riego, you had a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to know if staff had any feedback from public, or the public or anybody interested within the community.
To my knowledge, this is the state manager, none to my office. I don't know if Adra or Georgie had anything through the clerk's office or planning, but my knowledge, no.
Okay. It seemed like it was a hot button issue at one time, I was just wondering.
And we may want to inquire of Wally also, I know he is on tonight, and, you know, if, I think, and I'm sorry, don't mean to interrupt, you asked staff, I think people are probably happy that this is going forward, that there was a mural, proposed mural ordinance going forward. But I'm going to pretend like I'm muted and let people answer your question, Councilwoman.
I think you're snapped next.
Well, I am, I have not received. Well, I am. I have not received any feedback. You're right. Sorry. I have not received any feedback. I have indeed.
Okay, before we move forward with the rest of council, Wally, do you have anything to add? That way, if any questions come up with some of your information?
Um, I am sorry. I've only been like half paying attention, to be completely honest. I do think there are still some things that are a little bit questionable in some of the parts of this, that like, whether an artist is revered that makes them an artist or not. I think that there's some very famous artists in time, in history, that were not revered at all in their lifetimes that are respected now. And so I don't know. I think there's still some questionable terms. I think that the price is still a little bit high for the permits. And I really do think that that should be based upon the work entailed of doing that type of project. And I... Yeah, just a few comments like that. I'm glad that some changes were made on it. It would have been awesome if we discussed this, though, for sure. Very much.
Okay. Let's go on to council then. Ms. Ogletree, do you have any additional questions?
The only substantive question I had was, at the end of the ordinance, we're talking about mural design standards. And it explains what city council is supposed to be looking at when it makes its decision. Should there somehow be some tie-in with, is this what arts and culture is also going to be looking at and giving us a recommendation concerning whether it meets those standards of, you know, original work of art, design, constructed? Because what we're saying to them is that they're responsible to give us a recommendation on the aesthetics of it, but I don't know if that means they're supposed to look at all of these things. And I think it would be helpful for that commission to understand that.
And I would say, yes, that those criteria in paragraph four of the design standards are exactly what that commission should be looking at. I mean, when they make a recommendation to city council, I think that if there is any one of these things that they feel like is not met, they're going to feel quite free to share their opinion to you and they... or their opinion with you. And they may say, it seems good, but it seems deficient in this one category. But those are the standards. And like the Historic Preservation Commission, I mean, that's an easier one because they know what their criteria are, or they know what is going to blend better with, you know, the historic preservation area. But they... These are criteria that will help them and that are there. And those are the criteria for that commission to consider. Yes.
Okay. Are we saying then that the Historic Preservation Commission is also looking at aesthetics? Because I kind of read it so that they were just looking at whether or not it could be placed on a building in the historic district?
Well, I would say it's both.
Not a fitting one, not...
Right, yeah. And again, we wouldn't want fluorescent colors or day glow in the historic preservation district. So in that respect, they're looking at it, you know, from a standpoint of, you know, it blending, it not, you know, being completely, you know, just like intrusive in an otherwise historical area. So there, they would be, you know, weighing in on the aesthetic and making sure, I think, that it blends in addition to their criteria for what is, you know, historic and not violating any of their considerations in that regard.
Okay. All right.
Ms. Schu, do you have any other general questions?
No.
Mr. DeBono?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Williamson?
I don't have questions. I just seem... Share the same concern of Councilwoman Greggo. It did seem to be a really hot topic at one point. And it would be interesting to find out what the public's perspective is ahead of time. But it's one of those situations that probably we will have to make corrections as we go, I imagine.
Okay. I don't have any questions. I just mentioned to council that if any council person has any additional thoughts between now and the public hearing, to bring them to Mr. Downs so that if there's anything that arises.
And Mayor, can I make a couple of comments, please?
Sure.
Okay. I just want to say that one of the things that this does is it avoids discussing a lot of stuff, right? Like, Mike has told me repeatedly, the most controversial conversations he's ever seen in the city is when anyone in the city tries to define or quantify or qualify art. And this ordinance doesn't do that. And so when we say, wow, the public has lost their interest, well, maybe it's because I have... And I'm not trying to pat myself on the back, but that I have tiptoed that minefield. And so that controversy is kind of taken out of this. You know, no one is really interested in a boring, you know, ordinance other than those of us who are responsible for it, meaning council and staff. But it avoids that. It also avoids, you know, a conversation of, I'm not trying to say who is a muralist or who is an artist. I get it. Van Gogh may not have been appreciated during his lifetime. But I'm not trying to say that, or who is or who is not. But if I'm paying top dollar for a mural to be applied to my building, then I'm sure going to be, I guess, hiring someone who is a really quality muralist. I'm not trying to define that. I wouldn't notice such a person if they bit me. So I have no idea. The other thing I want to say is the cost. We... Okay, so council told me specifically $500. You told me that. And that's why I sent you an email. I said, I'm sorry, it is our recommendation to be a little less than that. Because it has to be tethered to the amount of services that staff is going to be investing in every application. But we do want to err on the side of allowing people to come forward and have mural applications, especially because it has taken me so long to get a mural ordinance before you. So that's why it's at $350. Anything less, I think, is really kind of a silly notion to say that that's the amount, that's the dollar value we're going to attach to staff's work when for liquor licensing and marijuana licensing, they're in the thousands of dollars. And this is going to be somewhere south of $350. So, and I just want to say that we do the same thing in noticing in what we're going to be talking about in council meetings. So to get back to my earlier point, if anyone is not interested, well, that's on them. And those people who are kind of having a feeding frenzy over the whole subject, I don't know where they are, but I just know that they're not here. And we're doing business the same way. So I'm sorry for that rant. I just wanted to say those things and I, you know, it's important. And this is what people have wanted, and I hope people are somewhat happy with this mural ordinance. But that's all I have, Mayor. I'm sorry.
Okay. The only thing I want to add to that is for those that are listening in, there is some criteria that we are going to be watching out for, even though, like Mr. Downs says, we're not going to say what art is. But there are some exceptions to that, political ads, people want to sell stuff, you know, just indecent-type stuff. There are a few items in there that will be not accepted. So I just wanted to let those that are listening in to know that. Let's go ahead and call a vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Riego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item 8D, Mill Street revocable permit and access easement. Do we have anybody from the Trinidad Think Planning Group listening in tonight? Let's go ahead and have a motion, please.
Out.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Valentine, would that be Mr. Just, or would that be you that would have some, any information for us?
Actually, that would be myself, Mayor. So this is the same topic we discussed during our work session. It's several items. The Mill Street revocable permit is tied to the stair landing and ADA access out the back of the old Marty Feeds building. All that is added from the work session to tonight's meeting is we had him define the actual area, not just a picture saying, this is it, but actually defined it with some dimensions. And it's, as defined, it's 134 square feet. And it juts out into Mill Street off the back of that building by 4.06 feet. We've done this same type of access for lots of Trinidad builders on Colorado Avenue where their front steps and handicap ramp access their front of the building. And another one that comes to mind is the Public Defender's Office. In L E A, we have a ramp that accesses their building. So that's that portion of it. The other was for the access easement. And this is all tied to the use of Mill Street or sidewalk cafe-type situation. If you recall, council during COVID said, we will try to do everything we can to help these businesses operate and social distance. So they have requested a sidewalk access permit. But along with that, we've told them that, well, we can't close off Mill Street. So they've offered up a conditional access easement through the parking lot that they're building to the east of the Mill Street right-of-way. That access easement would allow public access through Mill Street to Cedar Street through their parking lot. If and when we ever revoke their sidewalk permit to have that Mill Street used for seating or anything like that, the reason this easement is conditional, if we decide, no, we need Mill Street back, then they say, well, there's no longer a public easement through our parking lot. So we worked on many, as discussed at the work session, many options to try, you know, to work through this. We started out with vacate of Mill Street, and we denied that staff. Through all our internal discussions, said we can't, we cannot vacate that street. It's a needed access. It has utilities in it. So there are shaded area, Exhibit 3. I don't know what page it's on as far as... But it's shaded and it delineates the area they request for outdoor dining. We are working through with them on the ballers, should this be approved? And we approved the access sidewalk cafe permit. Staff is working out on the details of the ballers and how they can be removed and such for, you know, public safety and fire department access. So that's all I have, Mayor, unless there are questions.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and ask, starting with Ms. Greggo.
I don't know if I should take my council hat off and put my business owner hat on, but this area is very familiar to me because it's right behind our building. And this area is really starting to get congested. Not only do we have the development of the old Marty Feeds building on the east side of Mill Street, we also have a new, excuse me, property owner that is remodeling what used to be Rocco DiPaolo's old building for all of us. They're ancient. It would be on the east side of Mill Street. So that being said, I don't want to hinder development of the restaurants. I think it's a great... This part of Trinidad was almost dead several years ago. And now it's pretty much one of the liveliest blocks on Commercial Street. But what we're seeing down here is the restaurant owners are putting grease containers huge, like, that are the large-size trash containers, and trash containers on Mill Street. We've got a lot of congestion down here. So my only... It's not a question. It's a recommendation, a request to staff, that we really make sure that this area... People that use Mill Street understand that it's a very busy street. And I also would like to have a two-way... I think we need to maintain the two-way access on Mill Street. It doesn't seem like much, but when you... If those of you are familiar with Mill Street, it's almost the width of an alley instead of a street. That's all. I just wanted you to be aware, but I'm not opposed to it.
Ms. Ogletree?
I just wanted to ask, Mike, do you see any downside to our doing this? Is there any downside to the city in terms of entering into these agreements?
Um, downside? No. I think it will cause, you know, growth. With growth comes pains, and as Councilwoman Greggo explained, it's become a busier area. So we, as the city and our staff, have to figure, you know, what is best down there. The dumpsters and the containers, I know they're there now. But the parking lot, and I've got to reconfirm this, will have an area for the dumpsters and trash containers once it's constructed. So hopefully that helps with that, because I know exactly what you're talking of. And it's very narrow, two-way traffic right now with, you know, we have a new... Let's call it Paradox. It's the new brewing company. Thank you. I couldn't come up with that. Maybe I've had too much. But anyway, they've brought a lot of, you know, traffic to the area. And once that parking lot is completed, I think that will help. But to answer Councilwoman Ogletree's question, there's some issues to work through that's not insurmountable.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Schu?
No, I don't have any questions. I think Mike's doing a good job in getting that arranged.
Okay. How about Mr. DeBono?
I agree with Councilwoman Greggo with the two-way access. If there's enough surface area to accommodate both directional traffic and alleviate one-way congestion.
Okay. Mr. Williamson?
No questions after everything.
Okay. The only thing I want to say is, you know, it sounds like, Mr. Valentine, you and staff have had to do a lot of work on this. And, you know, one thing that I do like, the way you and staff are doing, not only this project but others, is that you are... You don't just say no and send the people home. You try to work through the process to see if there is a workable solution. And in this particular case, it sounded like you did come up with a workable solution. And I want to thank you and staff for doing that. So thank you very much.
Mayor Rico?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Ed Greggo had his hand raised. I don't know if you want to recognize him or not.
Mr. Greggo?
He is muted.
Hold on now.
Yeah, there you go.
Well, thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Mayor, members of council, city manager Mike Valentine. You know, I'm probably going to mirror or repeat some of the things that were already said. But obviously, you know, being on that corner, there's...
are already said. But obviously, you know, being on that corner, there's a lot of traffic. And progress, progress means all those things are gonna happen. So I think, you know, for those of us that have seen over the years, things were not going on, we do support it. We're happy to see it, and we invite more. But the concern is, traffic flow vote on Commercial and Mill Street. Commercial was redone several years ago, made it narrower. And so it does create its problems. The other problem on Commercial Street, and hopefully the parking lot on the Mill Street and Cedar side of the area will create, will alleviate some of the parking in the front. But the 300 block of North Commercial Street is re-congested now for parking. And in a lot of instances, those are, the cars are welling excess of two-hour limit. So, you know, those are just things to consider, you know, obviously as a neighboring property owner and business, before we support the growth and progress in the area. I'd like to see the patronage going on, because for many years it wasn't. But, you know, anything that can be done to make sure that there's a smooth traffic flow on Mill Street as time goes, would be appreciated by those that are neighboring property and business owners. Thank you.
Okay. Council, come up with any additional questions at this time? If not, let's call a vote, please.
Otto?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item 8E, First Reading of an Ordinance, Repealing and Reenacting Sections 19-13 to 19-18, Hazardous Growth Defined Declaration by the City Council, Cutting and Removal of Hazardous Growth Required, Learn More to Cut and Remove, Notice Failure to Comply and Assessing Costs of Chapter 9, 13, Trees and Vegetation, Article 2, Hazardous Growth of the Code of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, Regarding the Inclusion of Noxious Weeds in Setting the Hearing Date for Consideration of City Ordinance to 6:00 p.m. on April the 20th, 2021. Could I have someone to introduce, please?
I'll introduce.
Could I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Wolf, are you in on tonight?
Yes, I'm here.
I know that we had a good discussion at the last work session. Do you have anything to add? I just want to say thank you for providing that bit of information to actually show what that, you know, Myrtle Spurge looks like, and that it can be toxic if touched. So that was some additional information that I read. So do you have anything else that you would like to add, please?
Sure. Just briefly, I think in your packet, you received this, a weed agreement. And that's what motivated the changes in the ordinance. We're not trying to be heavy-handed about weeds. We're trying to be informative. And the agreement with the Conservation District will include sending out in utility bills, information about Myrtle Spurge. And then I know, Mr. Mayor, you had asked about resources. This is a book. So for those of you who can see the pictures on your screen. So there is a book available specific to weeds here in autonomous county. It has a relative of Myrtle Spurge in it. And I know Councilman, I believe it was Goodall, asked about treatment options. And this book explains that, too, following the Noxious Weed Act. It has mechanical options as well as chemicals, or nonchemicals. So people are not, you know, being told to use chemicals. And the State Department of that wouldn't condone that in the first place. So the two, the ordinance, along with the agreement, that the city's going to collaborate with, the Conservation District, they work together. So I hope that helps. And then we will also work on something, some way to do more. I don't know what's going on, but anyway, we're tired of this thing coming on the way.
Okay. So, Audra is on it.
Thank you, Audra.
Russ Majors needs to be out.
Okay. Let's go ahead and get any questions from council. Ms. Grego?
I have no questions.
Ms. Ogletree? Ms. Ogletree, do you have any questions? How about, Ms. Shu?
I recommend you guys change your meeting due to the fact it was leaked on Twitter. Which is why all of these people are here.
Oh, my God.
That's gross. Very gross. I also recommend putting in a waiting lobby, so you guys know who you let in and who you don't.
Okay, can we?
Could you tell us the Twitter handle that this was on?
Uh, bet. Uh, I'll paste it, because I don't feel like saying this thing aloud.
Thank you for doing that.
Okay, yep, they got it. But this is at-
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Y'all have a nice day.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Can we move, can we move forward? Hello?
If this is on Twitter, like you said, there might be people that will be continuing to comment on this.
This is gonna need to be rescheduled with a waiting room.
Yes, we need to end this meeting. The comments are horrible.
Mr. Valentine, do you think we ought to end this meeting?
Unless I do, Mayor, we do not need to have this going on.
I love you, Audra.
I would like a motion. Ms. Grego, could you give us a motion? Okay, second.
Second.
Okay, color roll, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Ogletree? She's not on.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Yes. Motion adjourned, immediate adjourned. Thank you. Reschedule.